Are we working? We're good? Okay. If we could have a roll call.
Councilor Long, here. Councilor Combs?
Here.
Councilor Hires?
Here.
Councilor Ratliff?
Here.
Item four.
Thank you. Our invitation this evening is Pastor Buddy Hunt from First Baptist Church.
Let's pray. Father God, we come before your throne of grace tonight. We just want to thank you for all your blessings. We want to thank you for the freedoms that we have in our country, our state, and right here in our own city. The opportunity to be tonight, discuss things, and make decisions that's best for our city, God. We just thank for this privilege. I do want to pray for your wisdom and counsel upon our mayor and our city councilors tonight as they do discuss different items on this agenda, and as they seek your guidance and your direction to do what's best for our city. Just give that to them tonight in a graciously way. God, we thank you for our city. Thank you for our community. We thank for this time of year that we can celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus. And God, I want to just thank you for our city employees and pray for your protection upon them and your blessings upon each and every one of them. Again, just be with this council and our mayor tonight as they make decisions and guidance under your direction for our city, Jesus. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, join me with my pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Moving into the public comments portion of the evening, comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes speaking time and cumulative total of all comments from the public shall exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talapaw residents. In compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during this public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to address? If you'd like to step forward?
Sure. I'm limping along here. I'm getting a knee replacement the day after tomorrow. Looking forward to that.
Best wishes to you.
Yes. Well, anyway, you all got an email from me last night, or very late last night, with an attachment, the comments on the ordinance about particularly R1 and R2. Did everybody get that?
I had to check my email.
Oh, okay.
I got it.
You got it. Okay, one?
I've gotten it.
Two?
I was saying I couldn't open it, the attachment part. It's like in Wordpad or something.
WordPerfect.
Well, it wouldn't open.
Wasn't compatible with your program. You could open it, right?
I could not. I'm sorry.
Is that right? Oh, well, it wasn't WordPerfect, but I'll have to put it in the Word program after some work, I guess.
Apologize.
Oh, well. Anyway, there's a lot of extensive comments on the ordinance and where it varies from accepted norms. The accepted norms, particularly in the R2 district where I live, are that only owner-occupied homes can be used for a rental-type thing. An empty nester, for example, with the owner, with a little couple there, has got all these bedrooms open with no children, and they rent them out to college students or something. In that aspect, that is not a commercial activity. But what is a commercial activity, and is an intrinsic violation of the residential restriction, is to allow someone to buy a house, convert it into a mini motel, have somebody living there to manage it, and let that operate as a commercial activity in a residential neighborhood. And it's particularly egregious because it's so close to schools. There's no effort made to protect the schools from these intrusions of people that aren't in the neighborhood, which is a danger to our youth, okay? And there's just a lot. I went to the planning and zoning board, and boy, some concern about this, but I also requested I be put on the agenda for this meeting, but it didn't happen. So I have extensive comments. The mayor said I should go and review all the ordinances. Some of the -- I didn't review all of them, but I went and got examples from other municipalities, like College Towns, for example, and put a university there and helped them put together their ordinance. And it was rather extensive, exact, even had a college zoning, which allows a little bit more hotel accommodations kind of things for towns. But anyway, that's -- my concern is that they're violating the intent, the protection of residential zoning to the residents because they won't use it for commercial activity. And they changed the wording to avoid the restrictions that used to be in the ordinance against B&amp;Bs, and that was bypassed last year. I wasn't at the meeting. And the other thing I found out tonight, almost no one's been notified of this zoning thing, this zoning agenda, and I thought it was a requirement. Is this a state requirement? Or was it in the previous version of the ordinance?
I'm sorry, but your three minutes are up.
Okay. No answer to that?
Well, we can't talk about stuff that's on the agenda anyway until it becomes part of the plan in the agenda, so you can wait until then. Thanks.
Okay, well, I'll talk about it when your zoning thing comes up, because it's germane to that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to press the council?
Dr. Rosen. Well, thank you for your lead, Mr. Justice, Council. I did discover that I'd available due to the audit of the previous partner that's unlicensed and unpermitted in Oklahoma. Now, he is the CFO. What was really interesting is the million seven that I was upset about is no longer on the liability section. Now, these people owe the hospital 1.4 million dollars. So that would -- I thought I'd bring that to your interest because I'd be complaining about that issue. Somehow, they managed to overpay these people and have an accounts receivable for 1.4 million dollars. So I thought I'd share that with the council.
Thank you, Dr. Rosen. Would anyone else like to make comments? Hearing none, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. These items placed on the consent agenda so members of the city council by unanimous consent can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any item proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with the approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session.
Mayor LaFleur, I'm C and F.
C and F? Are there others? If not, do we have a motion on the remaining?
I make a motion to approve the remaining items.
Okay.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilor Long? Here. Or yes, sorry. Councilor Combs? I know where I'm at.
You.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number four, announcements, presentations, and reports. We have recognition and years of service for some employees. From the police department, we have Randy Tanner with 20 years and Brian Jordan with five years. Are either with us tonight? Okay. And then from the municipal court system, Jeannie Sopratt, our chief municipal court clerk, has been with us for 35 years. Jeannie, are you here?
Thirty-five is amazing.
Reports. Do we have a report from the library?
Hello, I'm Robert Mooney from the library. And during November, I believe I told you last month that we were going to participate in International Games Week, and we did. We had table talk games and video games available. And there were actually, for our count, we've got about 119 people who participated, so that was very nice for that week. Our technology specialist also did an outreach about technology at Go U Village. And then one of our staff members held a special program for race three through five last week during Thanksgiving break. It was a STEM program called Speed Racer Science, had to do with the science of motion. So that was a fun and educational thing. And there's lots and lots of activities that go on every month at the library, but I wanted to tell you about one that's coming up that only happens once a year, because it can only happen once a year. And that is that there will be a noonday eve party on December 31st. This, of course, is in lieu of the more traditional New Year's Eve party that happens, you know, at midnight, where it ends at midnight. This one is at our ages six through 11, and it will be on December 31st, but it'll be happening at around the noon hour time. And they will first gather and make some party crafts. Then we will have a balloon drop instead of the ball drop. It'll be a balloon drop of lots and hundreds of balloons coming down, and then followed by pizza and a meal. But that's a great way to end the month for our children around our community, I think. Do you all have any questions?
Sounds like a lot of fun. Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a report from tour Talapaw?
We'll do the chamber first.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. Steven Wright with the Talapaw Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, sir. Got a hole in my way here, so, all right. I'm here for our December update. Maybe. Roll the wheel. Yeah, I'm trying. Is it moving over there? Quit moving it, Steve. Quit moving it? All right, sorry. Good? All right. All right. I don't need that. We have currently 359 total members, 305 businesses, and 54 individual memberships. Wait, Clint. It's not working. That's all right. I can wing it, Clint. Roll down. No, it's -- I'm moving it, but it's dead. Just hit the next. Okay, cool. Go to the next one. Okay, here we go. We'd like to welcome our new members. Next slide, Clint. Holdworth Leasing, they have Hawxway duplexes and Hunter Glen apartments, north side of town. Next slide, please. Accounting offices of Laura Hopps Windows. She does bookkeeping and taxes. Next slide. Lenny Burrows Cajun Eater. Has everybody been to Lenny Burrows? Excellent food. We'd like to welcome them. Next slide. And Moon Dance Photography, great photographer here in town on Main Street. Next slide. And Vintage Addict. We would like to welcome them. We had 24 member renewals. That is a great list, and we are very happy to have everybody back again, so keeps our membership strong. Next slide. Board of Director Spotlight, Denise Ramos with Ramos Taekwondo, and Amanda Lamerson with All Designs LLC. Ambassador Spotlight, we have Laura Castro with Vintage Addict, who is also a new member, and Jennifer Yurton with Farmer's Insurance Agency. Chamber News and Events, let you guys know what we've been up to. We had a ribbon cutting at 490 Creations, 123 North Muscogee Avenue in downtown. They do CNC cutting, make signs, a lot of cool stuff going on down there, powder coating. Next one, please. Cherokee Elder Care, I see a couple people in that picture there. They have a new administration building we did a ribbon cutting on. And a special thanks to Bank of Cherokee County, they hosted our AM Live Networking event in November. Next slide, we have our upcoming AM Live Networking event at Talapaw Abstract and Title at 316 South Cherokee. This is open to everybody. Great way to get out and meet other business owners, with community, connect with people. And we are currently looking for businesses for next year to do the AM Live. We have one a month, so if you have a business or work somewhere that we'd like to host this, please contact us and let us know. We have December 4th, the Women in Business Luncheon. It is themed mingle and jingle. There will be -- it's a little shopping event there at the Armory, so if you can attend that, please do. It's from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00, and it is women only, so women in business. And Everybody Loves the Christmas Parade, that is coming up, not this Friday, but next Friday at 6:30 p.m. It is themed Holiday in Whoville. Has everybody seen the window decorations downtown? Looking good down there. We're getting lit up, so getting in the spirit. We have a luncheon learn coming up on December 18th. It's titled Business Killers. It's a pretty aggressive name, but it'll be a pretty good program. There are six common mistakes that consistently cause a business to fail. Find out what they are and how to protect our businesses from them. That is free to chamber members, and it includes lunch, so great little 45-minute learning session there for you. And that's what I have for you. Any questions from the chamber?
What was the deadline? The safety was deadline with the Christmas parade entries?
I'm sorry.
Deadline for parade entry?
December 10th.
December 10th, okay.
And that is also the day of the safety meeting, that the safety meeting is that evening at 6:30. We will not accept registrations after the 10th.
We're ready. All right. Thoris.
Good evening, everyone. This is not working, is that right?
Right, Clint.
Okay. All right, I'll just tell you. This month, or actually November, tourism was very busy with planning for next year and also going through a strategic plan and kind of finding out our report card on that. OurTravelOK.com, we sent out, we distributed over 1,000 visitor guides this last month, which, just to kind of give you an idea of that, last year at this time, it was normally roughly between 300 and 400 visitor guides. We're now up to 1,000 visitor guides a month. So that's a really good increase. And we are involved in five different kits, the outdoor camping kit, fall foliage, family activities, motorcycle, and Native American, and the numbers that were distributed through the state are on there, 776 outdoor camping guides. The requests for those visitor guides, 129 of them came from Discover OK, the TV show. 359 came from TravelOK.com search engine. Thirteen came from the travel show, and 19 came from television commercials and so on. The other numbers are on there as well. We had requests from 41 of the 50 states, including Puerto Rico. And I can't read that number. Fifty-seven percent of those came from Oklahoma. If you could change the slide. We made gift bags. We do that every month. This month, we distributed 240 gift bags. If anyone has a local group or any kind of convention conference, give us a call. We'll look at those specifically towards the needs of whatever group that is. So we have the area need qualifier for the Special Olympics Summer Games. That's back after 20 years. It's kind of doubled up on that screen, but the number of participants will be roughly 300. They're saying that they will be using 300-plus volunteers, and anywhere between 600 and nine to 900 family members and event goers will be attending this. And it's been 20 years ago since we've had it in Talapaw and we've got it back, so we're really happy about that. We are still reaching motorcycle groups internationally and within the United States, and we're also reaching out to YouTubers, trending YouTuber travelers, that type of thing. The only challenge that we're having on the really large groups is lodging issues in Talapaw for the type of hotels that they're requesting. Our website is actually doing really well the last two months. We're at 44, almost 45% of our last year on users. New users at 48%. Thing that's kind of interesting, when you go into the democra -- or the behavioral on that, is that normally it's the pet lovers are the number-one group that is searching us, but right now, it's down to the food and dining group, so that's kind of interesting. And that's all that I have. Does anybody have any questions? I always know what to ask you guys.
What's the date on the Special Olympics?
It's -- Clint, can you go back to that slide, please? It's the yellow one. I think it's March. I don't want to say the wrong day. Yeah, March 25th, 28th. For some reason, that slide's doubled, but March 28th. So anyone else have any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have any information on river and lake-related businesses and how they did this year compared to previous?
I have some of the statistics for the lake. Because of the flooding, their business was really hurt, and it was interesting, the percentage that even the fire department lost and the emergency medical people lost from that. I mean, the percentage was pretty high. I could actually get that for you and send it to you. I had that at the office. So.
Yeah, I know it trickled down into a lot of other businesses. That's why I was curious if you had data.
I was really shocked. It was like 60% loss for the fire department from what their normal revenue is. I think that's what it was. I can get the exact number. It was really.
That sounds, that's about what bail bonds was down this year, too.
Okay, yeah. The river, they kind of bounced back a little bit because the river wasn't as affected as the lake was. So the river businesses, they weren't, it wasn't quite as shocking that the lake was really hurt. I can get you the exact number, so if you want.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a report from Main Street? Have you seen anybody? Any city departments want to give a report? We have a current one from the street department. We will move on then to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. Item number C, to acknowledge Steven Meyer's resignation from Talapaw Public Works Authority and the Talapaw Municipal Utility Board and according to the Talapaw Hospital Authority Board.
You know he resigned. But I'd had a discussion with one of the people at the hospital, and it was their concern that there might be a conflict of interest there, because Steven, he would do a great job, but he's also an employee of Cherokee Nation. And then some other issues that we discussed about putting people on there, and one of them was, you know, Trey, since he's an insurance guy, said he'd be on, you know, the hospital board, that kind of thing. So we kind of discussed that, and I'm not trying to get into position, I don't have time, but that was just brought, and I wanted to vocalize that.
Well, I had asked Steven if he would consider being or representing us with the hospital, because after discussion with Brian Woodlock and Jim Barrett, they had indicated that their choice would be Steven, so.
Good. There's someone that I thought to put in there. Anyway, go ahead.
So I guess the question is?
I'm just saying that I think it's probably a little conflict of interest there.
Councilors, anyone else have a concern or?
I mean, I think Steven would be a great fit for the hospital. He's got longstanding relationships with them, and it's good to bring a fresh perspective onto the hospital board. And I've received positive feedback as well when I've spoken to people at administration at Northeast Health.
Thanks. I mean, I do work at this, I don't think there's a conflict of interest. I don't. They didn't think there was conflict of interest. I mean, I've worked at the Cherokee Nation, but I'm not in any health-related area at the Cherokee Nation, and I'm also not high enough up on any totem pole with the Cherokee Nation, you know, so.
Yeah, I agree with Steve. I don't see any issues there. You know, maybe if he was, you know, sit on the admin at Hastings, that would be more an issue, but being Commerce Department or whatever, I don't think that's.
And those were some beginning talks that we had, and one of, I think, you know, that was talked about, like with Councilor Long at the Cherokee Nation, she's directly working within a healthcare facility, which just wasn't, isn't my case.
Because we do, my employer does interact with the hospital daily, so.
Unless you're volunteering, that's not higher.
So do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve this presented.
Second.
Further discussion, not roll call? Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
No.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried. And item number F, to approve the affirmation of right to use submitted by Lake Region Electric Cooperative for the purpose of installing fiber optic cables in an existing city of Talapaw easement located at the Talapaw Industrial Park.
Okay, on that one, I do have a direct conflict of interest, because I'm a competitor of Lake Region. I'll work for, I'm a member of the community.
You need to abstain from this vote.
So I will make a motion to approve this presented.
Say it.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Abstain.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number six, recognition and presentation by Woodrow First Lego Robotics Team, number 46748.
They first want to present you with thank you gifts for letting them visit with you this evening and present to you. So first off, we are from Woodall Public Schools. I am the sixth grade and eighth grade science teacher. And then this year, also the STEAM elective teacher. I applied for a grant through Cherokee Nation in the spring and was awarded $20,000 over the summer in order to support the STEAM class. And the STEAM class, we participated in first Lego League Robotics, participating more in science fair hopefully, continuing to do well at regionals and continue to advance to state. Last year, we had four students advance to state science fair, two of which are on this team. And then also doing other STEAM activities such as coding, 3D printing, and just anything else you can think of, trying to incorporate all that to give these students exposure to that type of, those type of careers and options that they have in their future. So for robotics, none of them have ever participated in robotics. I haven't either. I knew nothing about it. So they did everything on their own this year and had to figure it out all by themselves because they, well, tell them, I don't know what, well, you're on your own, I don't know either, so go look it up and research it. So this is the robot that they competed with. And there's four categories at the qualifying and state events and then Worlds that they are graded or judged on. The first category is the robot design where they have to explain the different parts of their robot, why they did what they did, why they built it the way they built it. The second part is the robot game, and that's where they actually have a mat where they compete with the robot on the mat to accomplish certain missions that they had chosen over the course of the season in order to gain points. The third category is core values, and that is all based on teamwork. They're put in a room with a judge, they have no idea who it is, given a challenge, and they have to solve the challenge as a team. And it's not so much can they accomplish the challenge, but it's how well do they work together? And then the fourth is their project presentation where they identify a problem in their community, design a solution, present to an expert, go back and refine, and then they present at the qualifying event. Their qualifier that they competed in was November 16th over at Booker T. Washington. They got first place out of 26 teams. Never ever competing in anything robotics. They compete against teams who have participated for years and years, and they just knocked it out of the park. So we advanced to state, and that's going to be at Tulsa Memorial on December 14th. And the goal tonight was for them to do their project presentation for you all. Their goal is to hopefully in one day, implement solar panels over at Woodall Public Schools to help eliminate our carbon footprint and reduce the cost that they're spending on electricity to hopefully put that more towards the education and the school of Woodall. So they're, they'll take over from here. And they're seventh and eighth grade students. I didn't have to say that either. And may I take pictures?
There's a mom videoing. She can come up around.
We have lots of parents here. She has her mom shirt on.
We are Lingus Squad, this is Woodall Public Schools, and we would like to present you with projects on the.
My name's Kaylee.
Toby.
Faith.
Gloria.
McKenna.
Isles.
In this project, we are very inspired to help our school that has raised us over the years. In this human physo, we will present to you the what, where, when, and how we work through our project over solar energy. What is the problem? Our school uses a company that burns fossil fuels to provide energy. Our school's carbon footprint grows each year with every lot of energy we use. We are educated about the growing emission problem, but we are also contributing to this problem. What's the solution? By using solar panels, which is a renewable energy source, we are reducing our school's carbon footprint. Solar energy reduces our reliance on oil, coal, and natural gases for electricity production. By using this renewable energy source, we will be reducing carbon emissions created by power plants, and there will be less health effects such as asthma, lung disease, and some forms of cancer. The most common types of cancer from air pollution are lung, breast, liver, and pancreatic cancer. The sun gives up energy from rays of sunlight which goes into the solar panels and travels into the inverters box to power our homes and businesses. Photons particles of light knock electrons from atoms in solar storage box which generates the flow of energy. Energy is generated into a direct current DC energy that gets converted into usable electricity using alternating currents, AC energy. Solar panels reduces the carbon footprint and releases less pollution into the air without using electrical power.
In the past couple of years, our schools are taking some steps towards reducing our carbon footprint such as installing LED lights, new roofs, new AC, heat units, new building doors. We plan to start using solar panels to cover half the total power usage we cover in a year. Over time, we plan to add more and more solar panels to generate more energy to eventually be 100% solar powered school.
The solar energy we plan to use is an on-grid power supply. With this on-grid power supply, we can produce, use, and sell our own energy. And also, as this, we can switch between electrical and solar energy whenever we need.
Talakaw has about 225 sunny days per year to collect sunlight. The rest will be electricity powered.
Oklahoma makes it harder for people to afford solar panels or to even get solar panels because Oklahoma is more focused on making money from coal and oil companies rather than preserving our environment.
We are Lingus Squad.
I also would like to add that, I forgot to say, Representative Matt Meredith came to Woodall this afternoon and met with them during class. They did their presentation for him and had a great discussion with him about other options that they can take moving forward to make this more than just a project and more of a reality. And then they do present to the Woodall School Board of Education on Monday.
We're very glad you were here tonight. Very impressive. Thank you so much.
Do you have any questions?
Can you guys also fix the state of Oklahoma education system? They talked to Representative Matt Meredith about that today.
I'll work on our buildings after you're done with Woodall.
What have you guys learned about the cost of solar panels and the longevity, like the lifespan of them?
So a solar panel, even through Oklahoma storms, can last up to 25 years before they start breaking down. And usually, they only need cleaned once a year. And the total cost to just do half of, half of, half of our total usage every year would be about $26,000. But in the long run, after, I think we figured out, after about 16 years of paying off $500 a month, we would be completely 100% solar powered school. And the rest of that money, the $26,000 that we already spent, would be bought back within the next 20 years. And so we could use that for our education rather than destroying our world.
How many square feet of solar panels do you need to do like your school?
I think we figured out it was 800 to 900.
Okay.
You guys are some smart kids. You should be proud.
Thank you. It means a lot to me. Because they are.
May I get a picture of them in front of you guys? Absolutely. You guys want to go stand in front? Someone want to hold the robot? Hey. Miles, I want a robot. Can you turn that open? Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, item number seven, discussion possible action to approve the EOC's EMPGFY 2020 contract, Emergency Management, Mike Underwood. I dare you to up the previous.
I was going to say, before I get started, I don't want, I don't want anybody snickering at what I had to say because that is a very hard act to follow. You should be very proud. Great guy. I am here to, first off, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for letting me speak tonight. We, at the EOC, have received a Emergency Management Performance Grant for the year 2020. The contract, you should have it in your packet, which explains, I can't remember how many pages, but it's quite a few to go through. Anyway, we are set to receive a $30,000 grant this year. And it is to be paid to the city quarterly throughout the year. And in order for us to receive those funds, we have to agree it before Council and get your approval before the mayor can put her signature on it, we can send it back, and it should be fairly quick before we start receiving the monies back to the city. It is a matching grant, so, but it goes off of the EOC's budget for the year, so the monies that we use throughout the year in our budgets have to either match or exceed the $30,000 grant that's going to be within the grant. So it also has quarterly bullet points that we have to meet, and it's doable, very doable. We have to have tabletop exercises or participate in as well as full-scale exercises. And we've already almost maxed that up, and here we are, we haven't even signed a contract yet. So that's some of the bullet points that we're going to be looking at for the, for the whole year. So I'm here to ask if we can have permission to accept the $30,000 from Oklahoma Emergency Management for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Any questions?
I only have, I have one question. So we're almost done with the first quarter, so is there, is that going to be a problem for us?
Yes. It'd be part of the, the way that the quarters fall for the state, we're already into 2020, the year 2020. So it'll be part of.
So we'll get our first quarter, December 31st?
Well, as soon as I send it, we, I have to send in a request form at the end of each quarter that's signed by the mayor. And then I send that up, we actually scan it in and email it to the state. And then they, in turn, will send $7,500 a quarter directly into the bank for the city. It's all electronic. But yes, this first quarter will count as part of the 2020. Did I do that on there? Yeah? Okay. Worried after following. Students, they were really smart.
Other questions or concerns?
Make a motion to approve this presented?
I have a motion in a second. Any further comments? Roll call? Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item number eight, discussion possible action to adopt ordinance number 1292-2019, changing the zoning of the property located at 116 West Orkin Street from two-family dwelling District R2 to general commercial District C2 for the following real estate to wit, lots six and seven of Lot 41, Talakaw lots, Cherokee County, Oklahoma. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Sorry. Well, it sounded like, based on our open discussion, our open comment discussions, that there was some interest in zoning. I got your fill. This is one of six requests for zoning change that we're going to discuss tonight. This is the second meeting of ordinance 1292. I believe, Counselor Hires, you weren't present at the last meeting. I supplied you with a staff report. I don't know if you were able to review that, Counselor Hires, and come up with any additional questions or, Counselors, if you guys have any new questions regarding this property. I know one was mentioned at the last meeting, whether or not the, the small two-story structure in the northwest corner was included in this request, and that it is included. All the structures that aren't NSU's property to the north are included in this request.
I just have a general, I just have a general question. It's not specific to this, to this item, but it is to rezoning. You know, just in the short time that I've been on here, I've seen, you know, a handful of, Jason, I think you had one too. Is it typical, Clinton, you probably don't answer this, in other municipalities, for someone, you know, to make, to present, to move their property from one zone, from an R or R2 to C or C2 or I, based upon what its potential use is or if the property is listed for sale? I mean, I understand as a, as a property owner, why, you know, why I would want to do that, but is it, I mean, are we handling it in the same way that other municipalities do, that, well, it looks like it's in a commercial area and it's for sale, and maybe they want to put a shopping mall there or whatever? I mean, is that?
That, that should be the reason for any zoning. The typical rezoning request shouldn't always come with a development, that the zoning isn't correct for the development that they want to do. In this situation, it's to correct a non-conforming use. So right now, the structures on the property are already being used as multifamily, which is R3. And so if we didn't take any action to at least move to a conforming use of multifamily R3, then I, I don't think we'd be serving this situation right. The applicant requests C2. There's been adjacent properties recently zoned, the Franklin Castle. I think we ended up settling on C1 is, is what happened there. So I can see that, you know, it is closely adjacent to a residential neighborhood, so. But it is, it's close to our general commercial downtown district.
Right. And that makes sense. I mean, that makes sense. Like I said, it's just, you know, to me, I'm not planning and zoning or, you know, Board of Adjustments or the City Council or whoever makes those determinations. It just seems like, you know, we're seeing some of these that are, you know, that have foresight and potential for what something may be. And so here we are, you know, rezoning those because we also see that potential or what, you know, what the future's in. So that's the correct way, I mean, that's the best way to do it. Not because they come to us and say, you know, hey, I want this specific piece of property to be a blank and then rezone it. It's more of, I'm going to sell this piece of property and it could be this if properly zoned.
Yeah, that's a, you know, that's a situation we've experienced in the past where commissioners and counselors would like to see a rendering of what's being proposed or engineering plans or something like that. And it's hard to turn that off for that, to want, that desire to want that information and just isolate it and look at, does that property fit what that zoning district is trying to accomplish and trying to protect and trying to enhance and promote? So, yeah. And I think you'll see through the rest of the agenda items that we're going to be correcting mistakes when annexations occurred that, that the use at that time wasn't the district that it was placed in when it was annexed in. So. Great. Thanks, Clint.
This one's an adequate one.
As long as I've known, it's been an apartment, but I don't, I don't know. I can't answer that.
Clarification on the legal description. Legal description here is six and seven. But did I hear you say that the area to the north there that is a part of a lot next to it is also included?
That is Lot six and seven.
Okay, so that panhandle-looking part is a portion of six or seven?
Panhandle-looking part? Let's go to the map.
The one that says R2?
It's just a square.
Just to the north of it?
I think she's talking.
I think she's talking about the blue, the R2 spot?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. And I have the warranty deed with the legal description here. And it lays out that.
So all we're really talking about is the square, not the panhandle-looking thing to the north?
Justin?
Well, what I understand, it's actually just a square.
Okay.
So I don't believe that it, the legal description takes it all into the creek. The C2 is NSU.
Right.
And I'm laying between C1 and C2 properties. So, yeah. I believe that R2 is still NSU.
Are there two structures, you have two structures or one?
Three.
There's three right there?
Right there, yes.
And then, so this L-shaped piece that Clint was just talking about and the mayor was just talking about, that's basically the back of that hillside underneath the bridge where the.
If you don't mind, could you come up so that we can?
Yeah, I would say that that part that is zoned R2 right there is actually part of NSU's property of the, that L-shaped structure.
Yeah, I believe that's where it's NSU there.
Yes.
The two squares there, they're the properties that I have.
His parcels have to be a square. That R2 used to be like a video store or something, right? And then it's.
No, that's a bad.
It's like just one building.
I believe, no, I believe it was a, it was a, it had been a laundromat. And then the past mayor had a video store in it.
Yeah, but that's what that is. It's just one building.
It was all commercial at that time.
Yeah, but that's what Clint's saying is he thinks that that, this, this and this is just that one.
Right there, maybe. That R2 that's west of the C2, that is, that's part of NSU's property.
You got like the whole square.
Shouldn't that be correctly, please?
Yeah, there's, I mean, to be frank, there are a lot of non-conforming uses and down corners. And we catch them as they permit, remodel permits or changing uses, things like that.
Mr. Hackworth, do you have a comment? Want to come to the.
Yeah, I hate to, that's one of my sons development here. But the bottom line is that that property, I was in the planning and zoning board meeting and they had a display of where this property was located, its shape. You have probably illustrations you're talking about, but nobody else could see them. Oh, here we go. A little satellite photography. I'm used to that since I did that in the military. It's Morgan Street right there. And then there's College Avenue. And it's the castle right across C1, right?
Yeah.
C1's the castle. Okay. So that was made commercial. And I was privy to some of the meetings that approved that. And there was some question about parking for the castle activities. And it was said that they were not going to allow street parking for these activities. But in fact, when they have large weddings and stuff, they park all the way down to Old Central, through the drive-in and over to the parking lot on the west side of Central. So there's inadequate parking there for large meetings. Now, what is the intended purpose of this lot? That's the question. Is it going to be a walk-in mental facility or? I talked to a neighbor there just a few hours ago and he said someone was trying to get this into being a mental facility or counseling facility. And he, as a homeowner there, opposed that. Now, I don't know if anybody's been notified of this proposed zoning change. Is there a regulation, a state or otherwise, that says everyone that owns property within a certain distance will be notified by registered mail? I'm just asking that question.
Mr. Johnson, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah. And mail notice to the 300-foot radius of the property, the owners in the 300-foot radius of the subject property. And the legal notice published in the day of the press was on October 17th.
And two readings here.
Well, I talked to a resident there and he didn't get a notice. And he lives, oh, 200 yards. He lives, he's in this, this house right over here, right there. And I don't want anybody there.
Well, I think the requirement is within a 300-foot radius, so maybe he is outside of that or, I can't answer. Mr. Hackworth might not yet. Mr. Uso, would you like to?
Yeah. My only concern is, I'm not quite sure the distinction. We have C1, is that the castle that they have up there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you have one block away, there's a Boys and Girls Club. And that's my concern, what the impact would be on that because it's close to a school in terms of what type of zone you have for that particular type of property. Because I recall, I know it's a Boys and Girls Club, but I don't know if it's part of the junior high or not, but most of the kids in the junior high usually walk down that street, you know, after school and participate on the scogies. So I don't know if y'all consider that as part of the process.
But what's the intended use of the property? Just calling it C1. Is it going to be drive-in? Is it going to be adequate off-street parking for clients, customers, whatever?
I don't think intended use is a part of this. From what Mr. Johnson had said, I don't believe intended use is a part of this discussion.
So the intended use of it seems to be germane to approving, changing, zoning.
No, that's just, you're just kind of asking the same question that I asked in a different way. I mean, if, you know, my suggestion would, you know, is, I think it's for sale, right? To my knowledge, I think that the property is for sale. So I think the intent is to try to give it the highest and best use. Is that right, Clint?
Well, like I mentioned, we have.
The potential is there.
Yes. It's non-conforming, right?
It's an ISO.
And it doesn't.
And it's an ISO, actually. It's a very fourth put-together maintained, used to be in R, it's in R1, I guess, way back when. But it's nice to do this renovation of neighborhoods, but it seems that the children's concerns are not taken into account adequately. And parking, on-street parking is not taken in. This is the main emergency route for fire trucks and ambulances. And the Boys and Girls Club, when they have meetings, it clutters all the streets. So you're hard pressed to get, if my son or to the fire department can attest, hard pressed to get a big fire truck down Morgan Street when people are parking both sides of the street. So, you know, that's a public safety concern right there.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented, Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Do we have roll call, please?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number nine, discussion to adopt ordinance number 1293-2020, changing zoning of property located at 2353 West Chocktoss Street from open display commercial District C3 to life industrial District I2 for the following real estate, and there is a legal description thereafter.
Thank you. So this is the first reading of this ordinance. It's not an actionable item. The location is probably better known as the Old Pepsi Plant, Highway 51. The applicant is requesting I2 for the purpose of producing medical marijuana. The discussion during, I'll mention that the mailed public notice, the newspaper notice was sent out on November 13th and the mailed public notice was sent out on November 24th. The applicant is Truwell LLC and they have experience in these operations. They sent a representative to the planning and commission. They have recently finished two in downtown Oklahoma City and identified this parcel. And I don't know if it's going to be a lease situation or a purchase, but they are going to heavily renovate the inside of the building. There was a lot of discussion during the planning and commission meeting on security measures. They made the commitment to 24/7 security. They also discussed fencing, which the commissioners were, they were torn on the idea of fencing, whether or not that makes it an attractive place to break into, less discreet. Option might be better with no fencing, no signage. And so we, you guys and us, we decided, you know, a couple of months ago, that I2 was the appropriate zoning for the production of medical marijuana. And so we anticipated these kinds of requests coming in where we would know what the development, what the proposed development was going to be. And so then we would be able to decide whether or not to change that zoning. So you got to, you got to look through my staff report. I discussed the adjacent properties. I discussed the uses of the parcels that are adjacent to Highway 51, you know, west of the bypass and it's primarily commercial and industrial uses. And so this property does sit on our western border, so the property to the west of it is located in the county. The planning commission recommended approval.
Now, Clint, is this the same, this Truwell company, is this the same company that was also looking at the Elks at some point to purchase?
I don't know that answer.
Okay. So I'm just curious if we have more than one entity of this type coming in?
I've only worked with Truwell on this application.
Do you know if they are the ones that own the building?
No, the owner, which I, I'm not putting that on. The owner is Lori Lindsey. Lori Lindsey. They've owned the property since January 2007.
One more question about legal description. On the first, oh, maybe fourth segment of the, we've got an SE slash C.
So that's southeast corner.
Okay.
This is a, I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor. So this legal is abbreviated legal that the applicant provided more than likely from their tax bill. And so I've pulled the D for the property and at the next meeting, I'll use the full legal. And when we actually have the ordinance document that you and Grant and Clerk Hammond sign, it'll use that full legal description.
Does that mean it has to be read again?
No, we have to read this again on January 6th.
I understand that, but on January 6th, it's an actionable item, right?
Yeah.
Does that, that doesn't change the legality of a grant?
I wouldn't think so. It is an abbreviated, that they can send you a tax bill on. We use those legals in code compliance enforcement daily. That is the legal documentation from the assessment office.
Grant, would you agree with that?
It's a question as to notice, somebody could challenge notice if they thought that was improper notice. I think we have a good, defensible position.
Turns out to be the same piece of property.
Correct.
It'd be definitely better if we had them, I'm not trying to delay it, but it would probably be cleaner to go ahead and do a third reading and just do it that way.
Should we have, should we maybe put this on mid-month if that's?
Absolutely do.
In that way to expedite it for the end if that's the case. So I won't necessarily table it, but I'm just saying if that's the only.
Well, today's just a reading anyway, so there's no actually anybody who would just be asking Clint on the side to add it again, do another publication to stay extra clear.
Yeah.
Clint, just related to the company, do we have any idea about job creation numbers as far as economic impact?
They said two or three. And I think the bigger deal is that property has had code enforcement challenges for quite some time now. We've had to mow or pick up trash or hire a contractor. They've had a lot of standing water where they have old delivery ramp. I don't know if you're familiar with. And so code compliance issues, it's better to have somebody in there. Utility standpoint, but two to three is what they said that they would have there.
Mr. Hackworth?
I sat in that planning and zoning meeting and one of the particular things I was.
Want to come forward, please?
One of the things I was concerned about was the architect was the only representative, number one. I asked him, in Oklahoma City code, how far away can they be from schools? 500 feet, which I thought was amazing that they would put a drug-producing facility 500 foot from a school. But anyway, now, the architect said that there were state requirements for security, which includes, what, eight-foot fences and razor wire on top of it or something like that?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, that's what he was saying. There's a, there's a state requirement that those be secured and the fencing was one of those things, so.
Just to clarify, because I was there too and I don't believe there was any requirement as to fencing, but yes, security is mandated by the state. You're currently.
Somebody mentioned razor wire. I don't know if the architect did.
Boy, I can't remember if it was the applicant was interested in eight-foot fence, but our code allows for six-foot according to Clint. So you have to get a variance to come up with an eight-foot. So he was looking at six-foot.
Well, I talked to the architect. I think he said, he told me it was razor wire on top and some, some state requirement. This is a state requirement for marijuana-producing facilities. So.
That definitely would be a concern for this entity moving forward, but it is not a part of the discussion about zoning.
Yeah.
Well, my.
That's also a request for zoning, changing zoning, not an actual application for medical marijuana growth facility.
Yeah, it's far enough away from that daycare center down the road, which is my primary concern. But the real concern is when you drive into town, the west gate becomes, here's another marijuana facility. And there should be some restrictions on signs advertising this, you know? Welcome to Talquaw for your drug supplies or some, you know, I don't know. I'm just saying publicity.
The voters of the state of Oklahoma decided that selling marijuana is something that is legal and that's where we're going to be.
And not only that to Mr. Hackworth, but you're also coming through the one that, you know, Wagner County that wants to be the capital for marijuana state of Oklahoma.
Well, everybody's climbing on board's money, you know? But the point is that if you're every kind of community of families.
We're just talking about rezoning today, Mr. Hackworth, that's all.
Yeah, but are you, you going to prevent the?
We will at some point. Right now, we're just talking about discussion of rezoning.
Yeah, but the intent, you need to, see, it's like the previous property. What's the intent of that rezoning?
Right, it was for sale and that was my question.
Yeah, and if it's going.
Thank you for your concerns.
Well.
I have a question. And I don't have anything to do with that, but it's, I just thought of it. Well, there's.
They're growing and so the city makes money off the sales tax. So if they're growing at the facility and they sell it, do we, if it stays in Talquaw, we get money, but if it doesn't, say?
They don't sell from a facility, I understand. Other than wholesale.
It'll be property taxes and utilities and a couple of jobs.
That one's Lake Region, if that matters to you.
Well, I think you're making a big mistake. Your McDonald's store there is the perfect place to grow it and sell, drive-through marijuana sale.
No, thank you.
It's laying foul, isn't it?
Okay, do we have a motion?
Well, there's no questions, just a session.
Sorry. So let's move on to item number 10, discussion to adopt ordinance number 1294-2020, changing the zoning of property located at 3,000 Southwest Coby Avenue from open display commercial District C3 and single-family dwelling District R1 to life industrial District I2 for the following real estate to wit, and again, a legal description.
Yeah, a rather lengthy one. So this is kind of in the same vein as the last request. This property is probably more familiar to you as the old Stuteville Ford. And as Counselor Ratliff and I were discussing earlier, that some of these exercises will be to correct past oversight and mistakes that were made. For some reason, Stuteville Ford has been R1, single-family zoned since its annexation in the city lines. And so it was non-conforming while it was still in use. The applicant is requesting I2 and the purpose for the request to I2 is for the production of medical marijuana. There is a. There is a, I think, I put in my stuff, 26,000 square foot, 24,000, 26,000 square foot warehouse-type building located on the property that's been vacant for quite some time. The adjacent parcels, they're not I. And so, you know, I-2 opens the door to a lot of options when it comes to the activities that would be permitted here. So, there is thought to special use options that have been used in the past, since we do have a known use request. And so, it's something that was discussed in planning and zoning. But I will let you know that they did vote to recommend approval of this. And just to stay consistent, the mailed public notice was mailed on November 13th, and the legal notice in the Talquaw Daily Press was published on November 24th. So, those have the adequate highway frontage, you know, that the I-2 light industrial requires that ease of access for deliveries and things, you know? But if you do look at the adjacent zoning, it is all primarily commercial, and so.
But it is standalone, it is standalone building though, right? I mean, that means we know what the intended, we know what the intended use is. My only question is, the, is this all pre, I mean, currently, right now, as this stands, this is all on one legal description, which includes?
Yeah, they have a, they have a modified legal description in there. It intentionally went to include that house, and that's something that they mentioned in planning commission meeting, was their desire to utilize that house as an Airbnb.
If not, we'll move on to item number 11, discussion to adult ordinance number 1295-2020, changing the.
Mayor, would you like a little discussion on, on 10? I mean, I.
If you would like to discuss something.
Yeah, I'm going to be the Lisi if it's approved. My name is Burl Berry. I know several of these guys, and I've grown up here, I was born in this building 56 years ago. Can I give you something? Is it, so I can, I'll probably lead you through it. My intended uses for the, for the deal? What you see here is pictures of the facility that I am currently maintaining in the city of Muskogee. The first picture is a plant grown in a, in an airbag. The second picture you see is the hallway of the grow rooms we have over there. We would be building inside the building. It would not, we would not change the outdoor aspect of any of that building out there, except it's my plan is to landscape it, turn it into something beautiful. I don't know if many of you know, but I did do landscaping for North Park, Free Charge, the city of Talquaw. I did do the landscaping for the castle you guys were talking about, and I did landscape the mayor's office in the past. So, I want it to look good, as if this has been my town and Allen's and everybody's. You see the hallway there, you see the security monitors? We don't have to put an eight-foot fence. As long as it's properly secured, it's a building inside of a building. We will not affect that outside of that building. The building in Muskogee is monitored 24/7. We have armed security, we have it monitored by an alarm company, and also the security company are watching the monitors. I have it on my phone 24/7. So, it's all state-of-the-art. You'll turn the page. My wife took, we took all these pictures last Wednesday. You'll see. You see workers, you see all of them wearing protective. We scrub in and scrub out of every room. They all change their gloves, they walk across, disinfect it, so we don't carry anything from room to room. It's totally medically prone. I think I skipped too many pages. Maybe you shouldn't get me. Can you see your other pictures?
What are the little white hoses doing? What's inside the white hoses?
Which one?
Water, that's their water.
It's all water. And you'll see a picture, I know there's a picture in there of the automated fertilization. That's the humidity and temperature. It's all got to be, that's lights, that controls all the lights. You have to light this stuff. If you're in a veg state where you're growing it, you're lighting it 18 hours a day. If you're in a flower state, you're lighting it 12 hours. See, it's easier to grow it in a premise, in a building like we're doing, instead of growing it in a nursery. I own parkill plants. And so, it's easier to grow it inside of a building to control the environment, better insect control. We released thousands of ladybugs today, you know? It's all biological, and you can't spray anything on it. It's all, you know, it's all strictly tested and so forth. So, can, other questions?
Lots changing in a few years, isn't it?
Yeah. I bought, I was telling somebody today, I bought so many pickups there, my dad probably bought more from the green halls than anybody, you know? I drove around the building, I thought, man, I used to buy pickups here, now look from proposing to.
How many people were you employed at this facility?
Probably, when we're, when we're through with the build-out, probably 12 to 15.
Okay.
It is my plan, so you know, and to help the tax, it is my plan to lease the front part of it for a dispensary. I would build to grow, I will design to grow around where the customers from that dispensary can see two rooms, so they can physically walk back there. They won't have access to those rooms, but they can physically walk back, if they're a customer of that dispensary, and visually look at the plants. They can see the grow process, as long as it is during the light stage. I mean, we can't show them if it's in the dark stage.
Right.
But it's pretty, it's a pretty neat aspect. You see a lot of it in Colorado and in California that's done that one. People have a better, if they see how it's grown, there's so many of these grow operations that are set up in barns and, and, you know, that aren't done right.
For you to know, tonight, that's something, sorry, you know, why I always ask this for two minutes. I'm no exception. One of the things that makes that important is a lot of the aspects of this grow facility, we're pretty much like a hospital. We have to go through processes just like a hospital would, and I think that's very important to exercise these practices if you're going to be medical grade, and we take it very serious. And I think one of the other aspects of seeing your plants grow is kind of like an organic farm or going to a farmer's market. You want to know where your product's coming from. So, this kind of mirrors that in a much more serious way. So, that is the advantage of that.
You'll see on the clipboard, you'll see the clipboard, everything that's done to that room is on that clipboard. When they go into that room, they take notes. We're mandated by the state to maintain a seed-to-sale. This shows everything, any waste, when the plant comes in, how we generate the plant, what we do to the plant, what we apply to the plant, it's all, it's all above board. So, it's a very, well, my plans are to develop a facility exactly similar to what I have in Muskogee. And we're talking several million dollars to put into the, inside of that building. It's a lot.
So, do you have any idea how many of these are across the state of Oklahoma so far?
If you look at licenses out there, it's hard to tell how many of them are still in business. I've toured probably 10 or 12. It's hard to go to them because a lot of people don't like you to see it. A lot, a lot of people are still very secretive about, about what they're doing, and they don't want you to really see it or know what they're doing. The one you talk about in Wagner, I know that guy, I befriended him, it's not advancing very fast. But when I went over and toured, he was telling me, he said, three or four clergy guys come in praying on the building, and they want to do this in the city of Wagner and this and that. It seemed a little overboard to me. But what we're planning here is, I think, even a better proposal than what I saw in Wagner. He's got a long ways to go. But around the surrounding area, there are several grows outside the city limits. I mean, the one I have here is on the turnpike in Muskogee. I know there's one right there next across the street from the federal courthouse in Muskogee. They're all over the place. But you'll never know what we're doing inside that building unless you came inside it. So, and like I said, the security, it's always been my thoughts, and I've talked to a couple of them about, we'll have security there, we'll hire, I have a company that, we'd have done it right now, but I personally'd rather hire Talquaw policemen. Our security is, would be to, we won't have armed security there when we're there, but anytime that we're not there, we'd have armed security for both the dispensary. I could give a lot more to security than what's happened in Tulsa, because we have security over there, walks in at 5:00, and they leave at 9:00. So, it's very, very strict. And we don't let anybody come in, because everybody can carry bugs. And bugs is, you know, if you come over and ask me to come see it, I'd say no, unless I know where you've been. Prefer early in the morning. So many people have 12 plants growing in their homes now. The one, the reasons I took the Muskogee growers, they couldn't control it. And they were, they had people actually working for them, they had home grows. And there's a couple of bugs out there that'll wipe you totally out. And these plants don't produce a lot. You've got to nail it. You've got to dot the i's, cross the t's. We get ounces off of a plant. It's not like we're going to be producing pounds upon pounds. It's very, it's very tough. Hopefully, we can make some money out of it. I've been growing plants since I was, I worked, went to work for my dad at like nine or 10 years old. So, I've been here all my life, and I mean, most of you probably knew my facility across town. I sold that to private equity guys over West of Holbert. Holbert's wishing I would buy it back. They told me that they didn't realize the financial impact that 700 employees went out when the, the private equity guys I sold to went broke. So, any other questions? Trey? Mr. Hires?
No, sir.
Okay. You want me to take your booklet back, or would you like to keep it?
I'm going to keep that, thanks.
I want to keep it at school.
Okay, just, just keep it in your possession. Like I said, this is pictures we took last Wednesday of an operating facility, okay? Thank you.
No further discussion on 10. We'll move on to item number 11, discussion to adult ordinance number 1295-2020, changing the zoning of property located at 123 West Willis Road, from open display commercial C3, light industrial I-2 for the following real estate, followed by legal description.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to start sounding like a broken record, but this is a property that you'd probably be more familiar with, Step Mobile Home, Willis Road. The old office structure that had been burnt out has since been removed, and that's the, let me give you my map, that's the parcel that we're talking about here. It wasn't too long ago that this property was rezoned, C3, open display commercial. The applicant spoke to the planning commission and didn't flat-out say that the intended purpose is a medical marijuana-growing facility. There were also some interest in some mechanical body shop type endeavors that you would have to be in the I-2 district as well. I think they were just wanting to keep all their options on the table, including medical marijuana production. So, you can see the adjacent land use is primarily residential and commercial, but as you start moving south and east, it does become industrial. Here's a larger zoning map. Oh, no. Where'd you go through all this stuff? But I think it's fair to say that a lot of our industrial zone parcels.
Do you mind if I speak, Clint, while you're working on that?
Yeah, go for it, Jason.
Did you wear that colored shirt to match the zoning map, Jen?
That's it. You're in the spirit of the eyes.
Thank you.
So, this is, this is the old Step office and then the whatever, Pat has his.
It's a part, it's a part of that.
What that metal building is there behind it?
That's, that's still there, that still belongs to what is Step Mobile Home, so. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. My name is Jason Wright with Century 21 Wright Real Estate, representing Square One Properties. And so, in the packet that I passed out to you, this is pretty detailed information. It does show where the property is that you're familiar with. This was previously an extremely blighted property that had a burned-out mobile home on it, as well as remnants from other mobile homes and parts of that. And so, the second page shows, again, the property location outlining the zoning. On the third page, I did the satellite image overlay, so you can kind of tell where we're at in reference to the property and what's there, and then the zoning over that, so it kind of puts things in perspective. And then, on the fourth page, it does show the proximity to the other industrial zoning properties in the area. So, 1,000 feet to the north is I-3, which is Arcola. 750 feet to the east is I-2, which is Venture Drilling, and then 750 feet to the south, which is Twin Cities Ready Mix. And so, and then on the next page, I've attached a survey of the property, just a little less than one acre, .95 on this property. And that is correct, the owner of this property does not currently have an intended use for this, and so, wants to leave the options open to pursue interests of some commercial businesses. Pulled some notes just from the city's website. So, I-2 light industrial is intended primarily for the conduct of light manufacturing. I'm summarizing here, but these do not depend primarily on frequent personal visits from customers or clients, but may require good accessibility to major rail, air, or street transportation, which is what we have with this property being just down on Willis Road. And then, some of the uses, building materials, sales yard, lumberyard, sale of rock, sand, gravel, and like, as incidental part of main business, but not including a concrete batch plant. So, this is a little less than what a batch plant would be. I know there was some controversy over that. Contractors' equipment storage yard or plant, rental of equipment commonly used by contractors. And then, and then we talked about the automobile assembling, painting, upholstering, rebuilding, reconditioning, body and fender work, and then a blacksmith shop or machine shop. So, the owner felt like that this property would fit into the I-2 category best, and is in a region that also fits that. It's come up a couple of times, I think, this evening about properties being for sale. This property is not currently for sale. This gentleman that owns it will most likely try to recruit some type of business in here and build a building and bring something in there. So, just something that you're familiar with. He is a, what I consider a high-level investor that's done some business and was responsible for the sale of the property where the current McDonald's is located. So, he does, does do some things and is able to make some things happen. So, that's what I got, and I'd be glad to answer any questions on this property if I can.
Is the same owner also in the mobile home park?
Uh, no, no.
I assume it is a mobile home park, is a name park, or is it just?
This particular one?
So, you're saying that the, the previous Step Mobile Home right there where the fire was, and then the metal building that's to the south of that, those are the, basically the two pieces of what we're talking about?
So, that's correct. This property that we're talking about tonight sold from the rest of the Step Mobile Home property. So, we previously had that for sale in, I think, four tracks, and so, this one sold about a year or so ago, and then he cleaned it up, got, got all the burnout off there and the rest of the parts, and then went in and cleaned everything up, and is looking to go back with something, wanting to pursue the interest of some type of business in this category.
Thanks, Jason.
No further discussion on this item. We'll move on to item 12. Discussion to adopt ordinance number 12962020, changing the zoning of the property located at 107 North Cedar Avenue, from single family dwelling district R1 to general commercial district C2 for the following real estate.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this applicant, Libby Brandon, recently purchased this property for the primary purpose of creating a childcare center. When she contacted me, it was a daycare. And so, I informed her that our code limited in-home daycare to seven children. And only employees that can be there are families. And so, that wasn't really the option that she wanted to go to. And so, the only option available in our code was a childcare center. That permitted use is only in the C2 general commercial zoning district. So, what Planning Commission did, just to jump ahead, I guess, sorry about that, was they made a recommendation to special use zoning. So, C2 general commercial, but only for the use as a childcare center, nothing else in C2. And so, nothing, no cascading to R3 to R1, it's R1 or childcare center. And that's it. And that was their recommendation. And that's, that's a tool that we don't like to use often, but sometimes find necessary, especially when you run into zoning codes that have some things in there that limit, you know, what our business community is trying to do. When we can look at it and it would be favorable to, to our community to have another childcare center. The adjacent zoning district that you can see on our map, it's R3 to the north, and those are the apartments, Savannah, I believe, or Cedar Craft. And then, everything else is R1, single family. And I, you know, I think that's the primary reason the Planning Commission recommended a special use restriction to only a childcare center.
As a childcare center, there will be fencing?
Well, our applicant is here with us tonight, and maybe answer some of those more specific questions about the development.
Will it be eight-foot razor? Have to be the...
Only kindergarten.
Yes, there is fencing around it. It's a chain link fence.
Okay. I have a question, Plan. So rather than do the special use, would this be an instance that you could do like the PUD? And then you can, then that comes back to the council to approve actually what goes in that zone area?
I mean, it is a tool that you could use here. But it kind of opens it up for anything. If Ms. Brandon does sell the property, it's a PUD, so the next person can come in. Granted, this body will have the check of saying, no, you can't do it, I don't like it. But it seems like unnecessary exercise when we know what the property owner wants to do, and we have an ability in our code to get that. Instead of all these other meetings, sending her the plans to say, I want to do this.
And so, if she has the facility and sells it, then it would go back to...
No, it stays with the property. It will be a C2 special use childcare center only. We have some properties over here to the west of City Hall that I discovered had that same zoning classification. It was C2 special use, legal office or attorney office or, or something like that. We're limited to only an attorney, legal office.
Because I guess what my issue is, or my question is, if it doesn't cascade, then it can only ever be a childcare facility.
Or a single family home.
But can it? I mean, because it's not, it's, it's a C2 for a child.
It could be a single family home.
So what's the difference between, are you now? You have three questions?
No, I'm so confused.
I mean, I see what you're saying, because you're saying it doesn't cascade, and if it's C2, it shouldn't be...
Right, it doesn't cascade. We're not taking it away to R1. It is R1 today. We're not taking that away.
But we would, because we're...
No, that's our default zoning. There, there isn't any...
But it's not default zone. It's, we're going to rezone it to C2 special use, that, and so it can only ever be that.
If, if that was a concern, then say, C2 special use R1 childcare center. I can't see that being a real...
I'm completely okay with it, with you. I, I just want to make sure that we're not, yeah.
I would say there's more of a danger...
Can only ever have a daycare in this facility, and if in...
I would say there would be a bigger concern if somebody's saying, hey, it's C2 special use, it's cascading now, it can be a duplex when it's not a childcare center. Now it can be a multifamily center. I think that would be more of a danger than it not being able to go back to an R1 single family home.
This issue was raised actually at a planning, planning meeting, and my thought was it would make more sense to say it's R1 special, enhanced use daycare center or something like that, but our past practice has been to report them the way Clint's suggesting, so you'd like to stay with that spread.
So what's the difference?
Same thing, because it'd be clear in here to say R1 plus the special use only.
I mean, because anybody else that came in and wants the I2 Jason's property, they can't just be like, oh, not I2 anymore, I'm going to go back to single family. But I mean, they could, because it cascades, but say it cascades. You can't just decide you want to be something, you'd have to go through the whole planning, the whole zoning thing again, just to be a single family house, where you'd be out of compliance technically with your zone.
What, what are you talking about now?
Because it doesn't cascade down, so we're changing this whole...
So, if you grant these I2s, they could have a, a single family dwelling?
Right, the I2s do, that's, so I, I threw out an example, and then it was a bad example, and I switched very fast. Because that's a bad example. So with this, with this special exception, it doesn't cascade down.
Correct.
So it doesn't cascade to R, to C1, to R3, R2, and R1.
Problem is, if it'd be clear to do R1 special use...
It can only ever be C2 childcare.
We can always change, past practice. I mean, in 10 years... Or we can make a motion that clarifies that.
She doesn't want to operate a childcare center. And just turn it into our house. Technically, she would be out of compliance with zoning at that point.
Uh, both.
What's, explain to me, explain to me again, explain to me, Clint, again, what it is that she's doing, that we're saying in our code that she can't do in R1?
Yeah.
She has more kids than what are allowable?
Our code requires, or limits, in-home daycare to seven children.
How many have you got?
I don't have any yet.
Okay. How many you want to get?
I'm looking at anywhere from 50 to 60 kids. And I'll have like nine employees.
At your house?
At this house.
It's not your house.
Oh, she doesn't live there.
It's going to be a daycare.
She don't live there. I have authority, I cannot imagine. They can't afford to... You own the house now?
I just bought it, yes.
With that intent?
Yes, yes.
So that would explain why, that would explain why some people come to us to get rezoned before they buy it, right?
Sure.
I can see Stephen's point, leaving it at R1 with the special use.
Yeah. No, that's, what we're trying to do, I think it's just semantics.
But what was suggested, he's saying what was suggested by planning and zoning was to do it the opposite.
Well, no, they just went with the recommendation. Clint, that, that was the past practice, we had the same discussion, they, they actually made the same suggestion you guys are saying, but then kind of said, we don't want to give up a recommendation that would make the council stay in R1 if that is not acceptable. So, what I'm hearing today is I think Clint, my hand or myself should look back, look at current zoning to see if there are any special uses in place today and how they are related to past practice, because if that's the case, and if there are some, let me identify that and see how those are worded today, but if, if they aren't, I do think a better practice would be to zone it what it is, plus an additional special use only that's enhanced, I guess, so to speak.
Yeah, and my, my only concern, I mean, my only concern, knowing about the number of kids, would really be, you know, is the traffic, is the traffic and the direct, you know, just like when I drop my kids off at school, of course, you're talking 300, 400 kids at Cherokee or Sequoia or whatever versus 50 or 60, but it still kind of becomes a nightmare. And so, you know, I wonder, this is just a discussion only, right?
Right.
But, so, you know, I would be curious how the folks on, I would, I'm guessing that you're not going to let that traffic to stop back on Cedar, and then if you're doing an in-home daycare, you're likely more car seats, more parents carrying their kids in, as opposed, because they're pre-kindergarten, right? I mean, they're kindergarten or less, or give or take maybe some more in the summer.
Yes.
You know, so, you know, that would be my, that would be my concern as a, as a neighbor, you know, as a neighbor every morning fighting traffic, getting out of, you know, what is that, that's not Seneca, Clint, what is that, East West Street?
Patagonia, Cedar and Patagonia.
And that would be my only concern, is if I live, I live next door, or two houses or three houses, or just across the street, and then I have to, you know, try to bomb and weave through moms and dads every morning.
Was that a day, Ian?
Yes.
It was just an hour. It has recently been named.
Any more questions?
Clint, do you have a mailing?
It's the 1197 North Cedar.
Yeah, it was, the newspaper went out November 24th, and the mail went out December 2nd.
Is this the house that used to be Rogers Heat and Air? Or is that the one?
I don't know.
So there was a commercial heat and air place right there somewhere. Is that not it?
I would hope not.
There used to be an in-home daycare there.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 13, discussion to adopt ordinance number 12972020, changing zoning of property located at 509 South 511 Circuit Street, from single family dwelling district R1 to two-family dwelling district R2 for the following real estate to wit.
Thank you, Mayor. So there is a map of the location we're talking about there. It's just east of Jones Road on Circuit Street. The applicant actually approached City Council about 10 years ago and requested a zoning change for this particular parcel. And at that time, the applicant requested an R3 multifamily change. It was denied, obviously. And so, I met with applicant and suggested that an R2 request might be a better approach to this parcel. Mainly, the adjacent zoning district, there's a larger amount of R2 already existing in the area, in the vicinity. That's R2. Their lot size is large enough that they could potentially have two duplexes there. These are two small single family homes that currently exist there. And my understanding is that it will bulldoze both homes and build two new duplexes on this parcel. And so, we, yep, they are here. They, they weren't sure they were going to be able to be here. So, if you guys want to speak more about it, or wait till January, it's up to you.
You're pointing at each other.
I want you to like to know more than what's been presented. Property needs to be improved. I can improve it or not. I can help see if party value or not.
You and I have discussed this before, and before you wanted to put a triplex?
Mm-hmm.
We said the triplex was a no-go, that's what happened previously, and so we're going to, you're going to put in two duplexes, or two sets of duplexes, or one duplex, or...
I've got two, I've got two lots. So we'll go for a duplex on each lot.
Clint, the issue was our, to do a triplex, it has to be R...
R3.
Three. So if we do R2, two and two, you're good, right?
I'm good.
I mean, it should be good.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I've got five lots. Can you see the whole point there? Obviously, nobody else in that area has much investment as we do here. And a single house is probably a nice house there, can be valuable, but if you lose most, if you need any properties, to gain most would be a little bit. I can improve it or not.
It is a neighborhood that can use improvement.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
As a resident in this area, I do have a dog and a fight, so I actually think this is a good idea. I mean, it makes it cry some people, but, see, I live right where Summit and Academy hits there, so it's just a stone's throw, well, it's really strong from where I live.
Now, where do you live, Mr. Tracor?
I live right... Oops, where is it? Right here, this large two-story house here that I renovated.
Are you the, are you the one with the gutter, PVC pipe that comes out from the house about 15 feet?
Sure.
I was just curious if that's your house.
No.
I noticed it the other day. Okay.
Gutter and PVC pipe, no. It's actually...
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Never mind.
I put a French drain, I put a French drain along the side of my house, all the way back to the alley, which is really not an alley, it's a, it's a named street, which I noticed is washing away yesterday, and I can't even drive back there into the area because of the ditch in the alley. Now I haven't gone to the street department yet. But, but anyways, that's, that's a good use of that property.
It is good to hear that you support this.
And here's the hard copy. If you could circulate it around.
Okay.
Those are laparally extension comments, depending on...
Those are your comments.
How, how wordy you think I am to begin with.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'll just point out that the newspaper publication to the Taco Hall Daily Press was made on November 24th, and the mail notice was sent December 2nd.
Thank you. Item number 14, discussion on mid-month special meeting. Does anyone have...
Well, any of these need to be reported, legal description wise.
We talked about...
Yeah, that's number nine.
Number nine.
Do any of all these others go check?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we want to hold off on scheduling a meeting until we know we have more to go on?
Well, I think we need to do...
I almost wonder, when's the, I don't know what the standard practice is, or what is, what would the date be for mid-month, the 16th?
Yep.
Yeah. And then the following, you know, the following would be like the 3rd of January?
The 6th.
The 6th, if you have any...
I'd rather face the 5th.
So, the 16th?
But it would only have that one zoning.
Correct.
So everybody else out here in the room, the next meeting that you'll, would be the 6th, right?
The next laparally extended one would be the 6th.
I just don't want them to all think that they have to come back in two weeks, and there's a nine of something there. Except for that one.
We don't know, there may be something else come up between here and there that someone needs to put on the agenda, so...
I mean, I just feel like the management should have scheduled it, there should be...
We can schedule it. Okay. Item 1, 16th of December.
She doesn't have...
And then we are to adjournments? Motion? Okay, motion is... We have a roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes, Counselor Jones?
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Rales?